Okay, a whole host of technical difficulties this week, sorry about that, but we're back in action. Good evening and welcome to the April 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Would all members who are present please indicate so and roll call Mr. Carr?
Present.
Mr. Dial?
Present.
Mrs. Hannah will not be present tonight, neither will Mrs. Leskey, but the Chair is present, giving us a quorum of three members. And I will formally call the meeting to order at this time. Would all who are able please stand for the recitation of the of our nation's pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, well, welcome again, everyone. A reminder that our meeting is being broadcast on Cohasset 143 TV. It's being live streamed on Facebook. One can participate virtually by logging onto Zoom using the link that appears at the top of our agenda. And if you'd like to comment at any time during the meeting, we'll be monitoring the Q and A feature. We'll move right into the first agenda item, which is public comment. This is the section of the agenda that is reserved for members of our community to make comment or raise concerns or ask questions about issues or topics that are not already on tonight's agenda. If you have a question or concern related to something that's on the agenda, just please wait until we arrive at that point in the meeting and we'd be happy to hear your perspectives. As public comment is not are not related to issues that are on the agenda, we will usually have very little response or deliberation on any issues raised, but could perhaps put those issues on a future agenda for further discussion. So with that said, I will provide everyone who's at home on Zoom a few moments to generate some questions, if they have any, on the Q and A feature. And I will simultaneously turn to our audience to see if there's anyone that is here to make public comment. I know we have some invited guests for from from Mal U N and Mal Congress, but is there anyone here who wants to make public comment? Seeing none and seeing big.
Yes, sir. Question on the agenda tonight, are we discussing the change that's being made to the increase or the change back to the the cost of full day for kindergarten? I know those discussed last week, but I wasn't here.
Sure, um, could you do us a favor? Just because the meeting's recorded and we have to take minutes, could you just state your full name and state your address as well?
Collins, Smith, 171 Swire Street.
Thank you so much. We are not, that is not on the agenda. We had a special meeting on Monday to make a decision on those costs. We also had a series of meetings leading up to that to discuss that and invite community perspective. However, you're welcome to make any sort of comments that you'd like at this point in time, just knowing that the decision has been made.
Yeah, no, I I guess I more have some concerns, questions more than anything else.
Sure.
So I was at the town hall meeting, I think it was three years ago, when we, you know, unanimously voted to accept the grants that covered the cost of the full day kindergarten. And that required, you know, the entire town to vote on it, right? And this past Monday, the seven of you voted to kind of roll that back and impose the the cost back on to certain members of the town. I said, I have two five-year-olds, right? And I actually know a lot of other people in town who are in a similar situation. Actually, it's a really unique situation where that specific class has five sets of twins in the grade. And so there are five families that are going to have to cover 11% of that total deficit, which is crazy, right? You know, for for the town to put that on on, you know, a small number of families, it doesn't seem right. And so I have concerns about, you know, where did the come funds come from originally, right? Did they come from the state, from the federal government? And, you know, what what happens if they find out those funds were misallocated? Because they were, you know, those funds were provided to cover the cost of full day kindergarten, right?
So, um, I think it'd be really frustrating if you came to make a comment and you can't get any response. Going to give you a fairly brief response, just because we've dedicated hours and hours to this topic already. And it may not have been something that you were personally aware of. We advertised it and I mean, we've been talking about this for months and months. And that's fine, I'm not arguing with you that you didn't know about it. I'm just saying that it is an objective fact that we've been discussing this for months. And and we just had a special meeting on Monday to make a decision about that, where numerous people were sharing their perspective on the kindergarten. I think that there's a general misconception that what we're trying to do here is we've decided that in order to cover this year's shortfall, we're going to have next year's kindergarten families take a take on a disproportionate share of that shortfall. That's not the case. That tuition's going to be that tuition's going to be dedicated to next year's kindergarten program. What happened was is we, you're right, at town meeting that was discussed, we have been endeavoring for years to offer free kindergarten, free full-day kindergarten in Cohasset. It, with the exception of the last two years, has always been a family subsidized program. And we just recently made that a reality. Unfortunately, the anticipated amount of state funding that that decision was predicated upon did not materialize. So it wasn't as though the town was giving us the the full amount necessary to fund that programming. It was, we were using that programming in conjunction or in tandem with money that we anticipated receiving from the state. That money did not meet the levels that we needed. And so this year, the cost of the free kindergarten was a material contributor to the shortfall. So in an effort to ensure we don't find ourselves in that situation in the coming year, we needed to make a decision on how we were going to address that. There are two pathways. There are cutting costs and there are increased, there's there's finding path with passive increased revenue. We have reduced costs, so people are losing their jobs. They're going to lose their jobs for next year. And in order to mitigate that terrible and sad consequence, we, it was incumbent upon us to consider additional revenue sources. And it has become clear that free kindergarten is just not something the district can currently afford. So we're making a fiscally prudent decision to do that and reinstate it. It's not a permanent decision. It is obviously extremely burdensome on your family and it's not something that we're happy about. It's extremely frustrating and we'll continue to prioritize it and ensure that if it ever becomes feasible again in the near future, we will return that service to Cohasset. But right now, it's not something that is affordable. And so that is why we made the decision. I don't really want to dedicate too much more time to that because, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but it's just, it's not on the agenda. So we have to have a limited response to these public comments. If any, frankly, we're not really required to respond at all, but I think I want to encourage participation. And I think it'd be really frustrating if I was you and I came here to express myself and just said, thank you for your thoughts and sent you underway. That said, there's been a great deal of debate and discussion and consideration of expenditures in the budget in making this decision. And it was a difficult one to make and we are sorry that we have to make it, but it is something that a majority of the committee felt was fiscally prudent to do so for next year.
Sure, yeah. I listen, I've had to lay people off many times throughout my career. I don't like doing it. I know none of you like doing it. It's not fun, right? Like it, it sucks. It, there's no other way to put it. I do think that there's something very, it, it feels wrong where there's a situation where the entire town's required to vote for us to get free kindergarten. But the folks at this table can vote amongst yourselves to decide to charge a small number of families within the town to cover that burden. You know, it, it, it feels unethical, right?
Sure, why don't you respond to that and then we're going to move on.
So there's, there's, there's a couple misconceptions and I'll answer this one because I was there, I was the Chair and we asked for the funding to cover gap to get free kindergarten. So just to make a couple points. One, there was never a grant, there's no grant funding that was given. The reason the town voted is because it was approving our budget. And our budget was free kindergarten. In order to do that, we needed two things, we needed to approve the budget and we needed to get an allocation from the town for $200,000. That $200,000 was going to cover the first year of free kindergarten. So that then we would hopefully have a chat allocation of funds under Chapter 70, which is how the state allocates funds to schools, that would actually make this whole thing self fulfilling. So the anticipation was at the time that if we could get one year of free kindergarten, these, all these new numbers would count toward our Chapter 70 funding and our Chapter 70 funding would then fully fund free kindergarten. So it hadn't required no additional money from the staff for the town. That did not happen. So the Chapter 70 funding came in woefully short, well below expectations. In fact, when we go back to only half-day kindergarten, we lose the Chapter 70 funding and the estimated loss of Chapter 70 funding for next year will be $1,400. So it was well off of what our expectations were. So we tried to absorb those costs, which previously were paid by parents into our school budget. But there's nothing there. So that's, that's where we are. That's how we got here. There wasn't an allocation of funds. There, there is, there frankly, there's another opportunity to vote, where the whole town has to vote to approve the budget. So there will be a town meeting and the school committee, but the school budget will be on there. And the whole town will once again vote on the school budget, just like they did a couple of years ago. So that's, that's, that's kind of where the, where the story is. I totally understand and, you know, I was, I was a no vote, but the, you know, fiscal considerations are really real and really dire and there were no good options.
All right, well, thank you for taking the time to come here.
Thank you for your response.
All right, well, we'll move on from public comment into.
Sure. Dial just answered it.
Yes, I think that Mr. Dial did just answer it. That the town will be voting on the entirety of the school budget, which would include the kindergarten tuition. So feel free to show up to town meeting. Historically, like 5% of town does that, so.
I think you'll probably expect to hear a lot more people in the.
That's correct.
That's, that's good. That's, that's how the town is run.
We've, we've gotten many emails about it and we know that it's impactful. It's an impactful issue for families, especially people with multiple, you know, rising kindergarteners. And, you know, it's, it's not easy and it wasn't an easy decision to make. But it's one that we think is is necessary to balance the budget in the coming years, so we don't find ourselves in a similar situation as we are this year. All right, so we'll move right into our invited guests and our first invited guest is Natalie Hefner from our Superintendent Student Advisory Council to give us a report from students' perspective. Hi Natalie.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Sure.
Um, yeah, so just like, kind of like a summary of what we're doing. I think something that's interesting about superintendent's advisory committees, we got a lot of voices in there. We have middle schoolers, which I really like. I'm a junior. We have a couple of middle schoolers, actually, boys and girls. And then we have a couple of freshmen, juniors, Amanda, you're also in it, and seniors as well. And we meet the Wednesday, third Wednesday of the month normally. And it's just a lot of really good conversation, a lot of conversation. It's shocking how many things the students agree on, like, and it's interesting from like 14-year-olds and 18-year-olds and a lot of us are like bringing in the same things. But it's like a wide range, so like physical things in the school, like we've had kids bring up like the sinks and actually get those fixed and then things like needing rubrics from teachers on all assignments. It's, it's a, it's a range. But we're actually getting things done, which I really like. Also, the surveys we brought in, yeah, a couple of weeks ago. We brought in a couple of surveys that we marked up and looked, looked at and I think those will be great. But yeah, a lot of really fluid conversation that's actually doing things like as opposed to just meeting up and saying we're getting things done, I think we really are. And it's great. And I think the amount of kids who want to do it, we're not really getting, it's not like a credit thing. It's not like service hours or anything. We actually want to do it and build a relationship with our superintendent and assistant superintendent. I think it's great. So yeah, a lot of actual good fluid conversation.
Great, thanks for that update Natalie. Are there any questions for Natalie? We just fired Will.
Thanks for coming, but we like trying to fix things. Is there anything that's not going well for the students?
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to think of any of it, but if you do have something, it's on your mind, be sure.
I don't think anything will make it. There's always like, always progress, but I mean, like, me and all my friends, I'm not even just saying this, like, we're really grateful to go to this school. We know how good of a public school we go to is. I think we all recognize that. So obviously there's like some little things, but overall, I think everyone's doing a really good job and I wouldn't just say that. Yeah.
All right, we'll have to have you to more of the mini meetings. Mr. Dial, anything?
You mentioned you've been doing some good things. Do you need specific things that come to mind that that you can share with us? You mentioned something about the sinks, but.
Yeah. Um, one, those surveys, I think those were really good. I mean, you can talk a little bit.
Yeah, so we, the students, one of the things we decided that they had brought up that they would wanted to work on this year was being able to have some say in what's going on within their classes. And as part of the curriculum review processes that Dr. Scollins and Mr. Roberts are running, talking about how we get student voice into those processes. And so the teachers and Mr. Roberts and Dr. Scollins have been working on creating surveys. And we brought the surveys to the Student Advisory Council and they gave us some really, really good feedback. It was unbelievable, actually, the amount of really strong feedback that the students were able to provide for us. And so they had an impact on what the surveys will look like and the surveys will go out to all students and the data will be incorporated into the curriculum review process. So and the the depth of the feedback and the quality of the feedback that the students gave us was really impressive.
Thank you for your, thank you for your work and the glowing report. Good job.
As long as you have three, like, you also make some good decisions and you'd love to just hear. So there's no wrong answer. And you realize you have a problem with pizza. So like, we'd love to hear this stuff, so if you can be heard of the change you want to make. So hopefully you guys.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thanks Natalie. Appreciate you taking the time to do that and for your service on the SSAC.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's your call.
So our spotlight on learning tonight is from Mr. Lovisi and the Model United Nations and Model Congress. So Mr. Lovisi, why doesn't everyone come on up? And we can take Natalie's name tag down there. And I'll just turn it over to you to open up whenever you want, or however.
Do you want me to share this, the photos?
Yeah, that'd be great. I think, yeah, you put those together from.
Little cheer, everybody.
Larry, want to sit here?
Come on.
The future of Model U N.
I know. Who cares to see which one you have? Alexander II.
Daddy's little, no way, daddy.
Thanks for having us. So I'll go in, you have Model U N pictures up there?
Sure.
So why don't we start with that and we'll work backwards chronologically to Model Congress? So we did our Model U N this year, the, the, the big one, which we've done in the past in New York City, the National High School, Model U N. And we brought the most kids we've ever brought. We usually bring up a lot of kids this year, it was 48 students. Myself, Mr. Sears, Mrs. Sears as well, and Mr. Turner, were the faculty on the trip. We did something different this year. We extended the trip a day to do some sightseeing because we've been doing trips to New York. But it's just the Model U N schedule is so like busy that there's not a lot of extra time. So building in that extra day allowed us to go to the Museum of Natural History, allowed us to go to Ellis Island's Statue of Liberty and do some additional sightseeing. It was just great and I think it really added to the experience of the trip. We had our guest speaker this year on the screen. President Joe Biden was the guest speaker, which was a really great experience. And getting to hear him in person and for students to hear, you know, a former president talk to them directly at Model U N about the importance of international, you know, politics and of alliances such as NATO, which he spent a sizable portion of his speech on was just a really, you know, memorable thing. I think we'll all remember that experience. And the students had a great time. I'll let them speak for themselves. I hope they had a great time. But I, I know this is my last Model U N. I hope to come back to it in future years, but I'm going to be switching my focus over to Model Congress in the, in the future years. But it's, it's in great hands with Mr. Sears and Mr. Turner and, and the returning juniors that have a lot of experience. So I'll, I'll hand it off to Mr. Sears and the students that did. So we have some Model U N students here and we have some Model Congress students, so we'll let the Model U N students speak to this.
That was my first Model U N. So seeing the kids in these committees was a great thing. And I saw them actually acting and getting up and speaking, so that was good. It, it's really busy when they're there, so that extra day was, I think, was really nice. And we're thinking about what we'll do next year so that the juniors that are coming back won't be seeing the same thing again. So we're going to try to bury that. I'll leave it to these guys to give us a little description of what you'd like to buy.
One thing I really enjoyed about Model U N was meeting different people of such diverse backgrounds and just forming those connections. Every year you'd be like a different group of people in your committee and just like getting people of different backgrounds is really interesting. And also just being able to research a country and learn about different global issues and different perspectives is really just eye-opening, I think, and it's just a good skill to have.
And this year we were Ireland and Lebanon. We were so large that we needed two delegations. So we had Ireland and Lebanon, which is just an interesting range.
Um, yeah, so last year, when we were sophomores, we did Boston University Model U N.
Awesome.
Awesome, yeah. Um, and I think it was like really good. We started out, it was like a bit smaller, more like intimate conference. And then moving to the one in New York, like it really showed us like, I, I don't know about you guys, but I felt like professional, like it's very, it's a lot of content. It was, it's a lot of conference, like, I think we had like eight hours worth of conference one day, but it really like get kind of getting like thrown into it, like it really gives you like an appreciation for like that type of world and everyone who does Model U N, like at our school, at every school, like, I think like we're all dedicated and really care about not only academics, but like like the state of our world. And I think I, everyone just left with like a greater appreciation for it. Like, again, like I'm not even saying that, like, really, we felt like that. So I think, I think it was great and especially like the fact that so many kids did it. I think we'll have probably even more next year, especially, but Joe Biden, I felt like that was amazing. So it's just, it's like such a great opportunity and I'm really happy our school offers it to us.
Um, going off of what Amanda said, I think it was really, really interesting to like kind of experience, like the mixture of so many different cultures. Personally, in my committee, I met people from like places like Italy to Mexico, all around the world. And just like hearing people have conversations in their like native dialects and like, kind of like hearing their experiences from like traveling to the conference and like how they kind of go through like school and their like own culture. That was super interesting to me and probably my biggest takeaway from this conference.
Yeah, I think it was great that the kids also had to experience being.
In the subway, the subway was, that was a fun experience too, taking 40 of the kids on the subway.
I know one of the big things was the food, I didn't mention it, but right?
It was, it was, I'll let you guys do it too. Mr. Sears, credit to Mr. Sears by coming on and doing some research and found some really cool, like eclectic food markets, like the, the one that I think was Chelsea Market, which I never went to, which was just, couldn't go wrong. There were like 40 rest, little restaurants for kids to pick from. So just, yeah, it was, we, I think we enjoyed the food, same as much as you guys.
I think there was a little financial literacy built into it because my son went on a trip as well. And one of the things I heard was the food was great, but boy, is New York City expensive. Well, that's a good thing to learn.
And yes, and, and there are, I'm just so kids know too, like you obviously go out and go to restaurants, spend money, but there's grocery store that's kind of close by and there's ways to have it in a bit, but it's, it's New York City. There's no real getting around that, the expensive at all. And then we have Olivia here, who was a standout star in our Model Congress that she went to in February this year. This was the first year of running Model Congress and we got 18 students to go in year one, which was pretty good, I think, for year one. And a fair amount of them happened to be my students because I think I kept telling you guys, it'll be great. But we got enough kids to go and they had positions ranging from representatives, which I believe you were too, right from Florida? South Carolina, sorry. So students were assigned, a lot of them were for new first-year schools. They kind of give you like a few things that they are pushing you towards, which were US House of Representatives overwhelmingly. And so we had a lot of kids that had different US House positions, but they were real US House members of Congress. And they had to take on their politics. So even if it's, you know, just like Model U N country, it's like, okay, I don't like this country's politics, but the point is that we're acting it out. It's, it's, that's part of the experience. And so seeing the kids take on those roles, I had, I had, Christian's unable to make it because he has tennis, but Christian got a minimum wage bill passed as a Republican. But he did his research and he was a Republican in a, in a swing district in New York. And he thought he should support it because he's got a appeal to a broader range of voters. So it was just some really cool experiences. And as a chaperone, just learning the, the, the conference was, was fun. Very similar to Model U N, just very obviously like focused on, on our domestic side, but I'll let Olivia speak to it. Your experience, maybe who your person was and just, you know, the whole.
Yeah, so I was the South Carolina Republican representative. And everyone kind of had like a different role, whether it was a Democrat or Republican. And there was a few people representing each district of the states. And it was really cool to work on passing bills with other people of all different parties because we need to make sure they're bipartisan, so everyone kind of agreed on what the major goal was of the bill. I was in the House Oversight, so we talked about border control and education, like school testing, like SATs, and just tested the sorts. And I think it was really cool. My group got some bills passed and then they were pretty small gatherings, I would say, of about like 50 people. And a lot of people were very passionate about it. Everyone was like fighting for a chance to speak. And then when we got to the bigger groups, we were able to kind of share our opinions more. And then we got to pass bills, it was pretty fun.
A lot of the experience is just putting yourself out there.
Yeah.
Like inner, like, yes, it's about a politician or a country, but it's really, the name of the game is just chatting up some people that you don't know, like icebreakers and, and putting yourself out there. And I think it's just such a great experience for our kids and preparing them for college too and life about just like being comfortable in an uncomfortable space and learning how to navigate that. And that's why I want to really, Olivia, I gave her the nickname Queen of the Unmoderated Caucus. Because whatever, and Grace too, whenever like there's that, okay, it's just like, it's, it's like less organized time. It's just time for you to kind of like make relationships with kids or not. Some kids just aren't really seizing the moment. And it's just so nice to see our kids just, what's your name, where are you from? And, and, and like what even just like their lives and understanding that, that when you can get to know a person, even in a space like Model U N or Model Congress, they feel heard and they want to work with you and they want to solve the problem, whatever that problem is, even if it's not important to them, it's important to you and you build that relationship. So it was just nice to see our students develop those skills too.
Yeah, I would say it was also very inclusive, no one was like leaving anyone out of the groups. And like Amanda and Charlie were saying, this also was very like diverse. I wasn't expecting to meet people from other countries, but still I saw people from like Germany, Honduras, just a wide range, and then people just from states all across Europe.
Thank you, yeah. Are there any, Mr. Carr, you have any questions for Mr. Lovisi or any of the students or Sears?
What did you guys, so Lebanon and Ireland? Yeah, we both in the news, like what did you guys talk about?
So everyone has a committee, so you get assigned. I wouldn't go down, I was Commission on the Status of Women and I was.
Yeah, I was World Health Assembly and I was Lebanon and I was seat 34. I was also. Yeah, I was World Health Assembly and I was Lebanon and I was seat thirty-four. I was also Lebanon.
And the women issue was in Irish or?
Uh, yeah.
I worked on the, I worked in Northern Ireland when I was younger. Just ask anybody, what's the topic of the day today?
Just an example of like in my committee, uh, we're kind of like a special committee on peacekeeping relations. So we worked, we worked on like finding a solution to, um, peacekeeping in South Sudan. And that was like obviously very relevant to like today and, um, like the spirit of the world. But yeah, there was really good debate over that.
Mr. Dial, any questions?
Thank you to the staff for doing this. Uh, these are the sorts of experiential learning things that are priceless. I'm sure you all have memories that you'll keep for the rest of your lives on, on what you've done here and building these, uh, the financial literacy about New York. And then also, you know, learning these social skills of how to work in groups, how to work in unstructured groups. I mean, these are skills that you use and you develop even as you become a grownup. So it's a, it's a great thing. Um, there's not an adult version of Model UN, is there?
There is a, a real one. I think ours functions better.
I think it's called the UN.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to have the real responsibility.
And on, on that note, we, um, just to transparency and we're never guaranteed to go to the UN. So they, they try. And unfortunately this year we couldn't get to the actual Model UN because they were conducting business. And when that happens, it's just like, we get like an email. Um, and, and it's just the break. So hopefully next year we'll be able to go to the actual UN because that's where we do, we've done closing ceremonies in the past, we're sitting in that real UN headquarters, which is a really great experience. So for the juniors coming back, I'll be, hopefully next year we'll get, get that experience. One thing, just, um, how the, I'm not exactly sure how this works. Since I'm stepping away from Model UN, Mr. Sears is continuing it. My understanding in the years that I did this with Mr. Welch is that we request now school committee approval for next year. Is that, is there a particular?
That's going on us right into the next.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that's, 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 that's fine. Because I, all I want to do is do exactly what Mr. Dial said. Thank you for that.
Oh, yeah.
Hu- hugely valuable experience. I think the Model UN, it sticks with, you guys remember those experiences forever. It's a great experience, exactly the type of project-based learning that we're trying to encourage here. So thank you both for, for doing that. And it's, and it, and it can be, look, everyone has to understand that it can be, uh, uh, somewhat terrifying for our faculty moderators to have, to be in charge of a big group, big group of students on the subway in New York, all that. So it's.
It was honestly like, it's, it was with this group, both Model UN and Model Congress, like no major, you know, problems. The kids were well behaved. They were where they were supposed to be when they were supposed to be there. Uh, it's great to get to know them a little bit better, not in that, you know, structured classroom setting where you can just kind of chit chat while you're waiting for the train or, or walk in someplace. So it's a great experience from a, from a teacher's perspective too. And, um, and I think it's in great hands, Mr. Sears and Mr. Turner.
I was amazed at how many students there were. Was it five thousand?
Uh, both, it's twenty-five hundred in each conference. There's two, so it's a total of five thousand kids, yeah.
So just navigating hotels.
Want to talk about the elevators?
But that adds to the experience, right? That's the run of the experience.
Absolutely.
But, and I know you're diminishing it and you love it, but it is something that the community needs to realize how much you're taking on so that you're delivering to the appropriate kids. So thank you both so much. And thank you guys for putting yourselves out there. That is a huge part of it. And doing this, we have a priority to do that. Uh, we hope you get a lot out of it. So, uh, yes, let's roll right into the next trip so we can approve that.
You want me to show it? I can.
I didn't bring it.
I have it up. I can pull it up. Yep. Give me one second. As long as we don't lose kids.
We can probably start to describe it verbally, right?
Didn't know the exact dates for next year.
I think they posted.
It's not posted yet, but it's essentially the same week. I can't actually see that anymore.
So, yeah, it's the twenty, so same hotel, right? I thought it was Midtown.
Yeah, essentially, you know, the plan is the same, uh, as this year. We'll see who's signing up. We had forty-eight this year, which filled the box, right?
Yeah, that's the only concern with like, it's a fifty-five passenger bus. Also, I believe that they cap you at fifty. It's a school, it could be wrong. So that forty-eight was right, right up there. So I, I hope we can maintain a, a good number, but it is limited in how many. That's why we have it to grades eleven and twelve, to make sure that if we open it up to the whole school, we would be able to maybe bring all the kids into them.
And as I was saying earlier, if we did anything different, uh, it would be, uh, the day that we had gone to Ellis Island and the Statue of Liberty, so it wasn't a repeat of the juniors, it would be seniors, uh, who will pick out some other things. One thing that was amazing was I was driving. I keep, that was one of the most amazing things on the trip is he drove places I wouldn't drive with my car, not dangerous places, but like small streets. He just said, I'll, I'll be here for a couple hours, park the bus for hours. Uh, so we got really good service. I might even ask him what some places are to go because he really knows the city. But, uh, some of the ideas I had for next year was, uh, the Tenement Museum, uh, of course Central Park. We thought maybe a Broadway show, uh, because we walked right by it, it was close to the hotel.
And I think there was the Great Gatsby, which aligns with the reading. So it's like, if we could plan that better, that'd be so great to take the kids to see that because it's in the, I don't know, is it junior year?
But there's, you know, experiential learning there.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, well, thank you for this. Any questions, Mr. Carr?
Yes, great.
Mr. Dial?
Um, no, I mean, you guys have done this before, so I'd assume you've got all the safety measures in place. You know, the hotel, you know, they, you know, the thing, so, uh, we're just bringing down what we've done before. Not overstated that hotel, that is very nice hotel. Um, so I've got, I've got no questions, concerns. Thank you for being willing to do it.
Uh, so it looks like, what, it looks like one adult to maybe eight kids if we were going on the numbers from last year?
So it would be.
This year.
This year, we had a twelve to one ratio, which worked out great when we went places. We had our little cards that you made us with a group, our subgroup of twelve, which was great. But I'm not, uh, doing it next year.
Right.
So would next year be three to however many kids? So maximum it would be like sixteen to one if that, if the numbers hold.
All right, and we, we're feeling comfortable with that. It seems like a lot. We have the chaperone. Parent volunteer or something like that.
We would want another.
Yeah.
Chaperone.
Yeah, probably want to keep the same numbers. Uh, and, and the hotel, how are we managing that at night? Like, we're making sure everyone stays in their rooms? Is there, is it like?
We had a, we had a midnight check.
We do bed checks, not below.
Would sound really late, but I find the kids are turning their homework in at three AM.
Sure.
But, uh, the committee is going till eleven, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we do, yes, we do, uh, together as a group of chaperones, so we have multiple faculty eyes, um, in, in one place. Um, and we have Mrs. Sears with us. So we had, you know, make sure we had male, female chaperone and knock on the doors outside. Is everybody, you know, in good standing? Is everybody okay? Is everybody ready for bed? And we know the rules and be ready tomorrow, next time. And, and, and pretty smooth.
Okay, and we know that there's no like, sometimes the rooms will be adjoining. We know there's not like boys and girls in those rooms where we can access.
Boys and girls having hotel rooms that above one another?
Yeah, like not like with the door that you get, you know, if you're both in agreement, you can open the door and then you have a suite.
Okay.
That's one thing, like.
Add to the list. I didn't.
All right, just, just thoughts, I, I don't know. I don't know that a lot of hotels do, but you know.
No, that I get it. Can't be too cautious.
So, um, and no disrespect to any of you guys. I'm sure you're all rule followers, uh, but just a thought. You know, we're sending our kids out of district, you know, we just want to make sure that we're doing everything possible to anticipate any sort of issues.
Yeah.
So thank you both for doing this. Uh, I guess, uh, is there a motion on the, um, floor to approve the, uh, next year's Model United Nations trip as presented here by our faculty moderators?
I'd like to make that motion when we approve the trip.
Motion's been made by Mr. Carr. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries by a vote of three members.
Thank you all. And, um, thank you. I think you're seconding that.
I am, yes.
Well, I live in town too, so.
Thanks, thanks guys. Great job going to that. Thanks for sharing. Appreciate it. All right, moving right along for a, I think a fairly brief superintendent update, Superintendent Shannon?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
So just to keep everybody informed as to where we are with our strategic planning process. We had our core strategic planning meeting yesterday, um, went really well. We continue to do really good work so far. We've drafted our revised mission, vision, core values and compass points. And we're excited to meet again on April fifteenth to develop our strategic initiatives. Um, and the other update I would share tonight is just a reminder and an invitation to anybody who's interested um, tomorrow night here at the auditorium at the Middle High School at six thirty PM. Dr. Elizabeth Englander from Bridgewater State, she'll be here to present on-screen savvy strategies for smart and safe tech use. This is a endeavor through the middle school and the middle school PSO to continue the conversation in the community around the book, The Anxious Generation. Um, the presentation will be for parents and cover youth technology use in Cohasset. It's for parents at any age level, um, not the parents, the kids. Um, and it's about managing screen time, cyberbullying, helping to build connections offline and more. Dr. Elizabeth Englander is the director, the executive director of MARK, which is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center at Bridgewater State. She's a professor of psychology, founding member of Social Emotional Research Consortium. She's an award-winning speaker. She is somebody that I have worked with in schools since cell phones became something that were in every child's pocket. She is remarkable. She is an expert. She is somebody that if you have a child with a cellphone, she's somebody you should come listen to. And we are really grateful to the middle school PSO because not only are they helping to support her visit and her speaking, but they are also helping to provide some childcare for any children who are in the fifth through eighth grade. Um, they're hosting a mystery in the learning commons from six fifteen to eight fifteen. They're providing pizza and dessert. Students will come and they will become detectives for the night, solving mysteries and figuring out what's in the locked box. There is a cost for attendance. It's twenty-five dollars per student. They get the pizza, they get the dessert. And the proceeds go to supporting the middle high school library. So all of that is happening tomorrow.
Great. Is that your update, Superintendent Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, when we're ready to teach and learn, turn the meeting over to our Director of Student Services, Michael Sifton.
Thank you. I just have a few updates tonight. The first is my data sharing, which I do each meeting that I'm here. March was a very busy month for the Office of Student Services for Special Education. At the elementary level, we had eight annual review meetings. We had six reevaluations. Five of those students were found eligible again for special education. One was found not eligible, which is a success. Uh, for initial evaluations, there were seven initial evaluations. Uh, all seven of those came from family requests um, during the month of March or, you know, requested prior to March that was held in March. Um, one of those students was found eligible and then six were found not eligible as not requiring special education services or presenting as having educational disabilities. Um, there was one class of resident evaluation. At the secondary level, there were twelve annual review meetings. There were six reevaluation meetings. Uh, five students were found eligible, again, one student was found not eligible. There were three initial evaluations and then at the secondary level for, uh, those three initial evaluations, two came from MTSS. One student was eligible, one student was not eligible. And then for the family requested evaluation, that student was not eligible. I held two out of district meetings, uh, totaling forty-four total meetings in the month of March, which was a lot of meetings for the office. So busy month, so kudos to the staff for that. I also wanted to present on two topics tonight, integrated focus monitoring and extended school year. Two separate topics, but important ones moving forward. Um, so during next school year, the Office of Student Services will undergo integrated, uh, focus monitoring or integrated monitoring review, um, with the state, uh, with through Jesse. And, um, what that will look like is, you know, in a sense, an audit of the department looking at functional outcomes and educational results, um, to make sure that we're fully aligned with the Office of Special Education Programs. Um, so that comes in a few phases. The first phase will start this year with a self-assessment, which I'll be completing. And then next year, um, and I'll talk a little bit about what that phase approach looks like. Um, but it will really be a focus on existing policies, procedures and practices within the department. A review of records and documentation, um, which could include interviews of staff, family members, um, and other stakeholders. And then an onsite observation, um, through this process. Um, Cohasset is in Group A and our focus, um, through this monitoring cycle will really be on IEP development, identification of students with disabilities and then current programming and support services that are offered. I broke down the integrated monitoring timeline, you know, as set out by the state. Um, so like I said, you know, we're looking at, um, gathering data during this phase here of discovery or we'll be entering the phase of discovery, so gathering data and information, um, to start formulating a review plan. The, um, the state will look at statistical data and with a focus on equity, um, will be promoting, um, and really look at specific indicators, indicator eleven, twelve and thirteen, which I'll talk about a little bit more on the next slide. The self-assessment will be completed, you know, this year, um, prior to June. And then the discovery phase will happen next year around March, um, where there'll be, you know, onsite visits from the state. And we'll work together, um, to make sure, and I'll be working with, you know, Dr. Collins and different personnel to make sure that we submit all the relevant information prior to those onsite visits. And then those onsite visits will also include, or onsite visit will also include, um, a record review, um, of different files within the department. And then a report will be issued. And if there needs to be, there'll be a corrective action plan based on the different standards and the different indicators that will be explored through the state. The indicators out there are really looking on our child finds. So that's, you know, defined as a percentage of initial evaluations for special education completed within thirty days of receiving parent consent and then making sure that those are wrapped up within forty-five days of that signed consent. Indicator twelve is the second indicator that will be focused on, looking at referred, students referred by early intervention, which was my last presentation when I was here, really identifying what that process is and how we partner with early intervention. Um, so that's the second kind of standard that will be looked at. As well as indicator thirteen, which is really we're looking at transition skills for students age fourteen and above. Um, making sure that, you know, IEPs that we develop for students include appropriate measurable, um, you know, goals, objectives, outcomes, and then how we support students as they transition on from class of public schools, whether that be to college, to work or different opportunities. So that's just a, you know, a brief overview of the process of integrated focus monitoring. Uh, you know, it really starts now, like I said, with the self-assessment and then that ongoing data collection next year with those, uh, resulting in the onsite visit and then recommendations from the state. Second topic that I wanted to present on tonight is extended school year. Um, so class of public schools extended school year is our special education program for students who present with significant regression of skills and require that extended school year programming to prevent that significant regression or for students who require longer to recoup skills following breaks. This year, our program will run from, um, that's actually, I'd update the dates there. It's Monday, July seventh through, um, Monday, August seventh, between eight thirty and eleven thirty. The ESY site, um, will be at the Joseph Oats School for the elementary level. And at the secondary level, we'll be at the middle high school. This year, our extended school year coordinator is Samantha Lapin, one of our middle school special education teachers. Um, she's currently working with me right now on the scheduling for that. Um, and, you know, similar to last year, individual ESY schedules will be sent out to families by that Friday of April vacation, you know, by April twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-five, um, to help the summer planning and coordinating. Um, like I said, when I provided like a quick overview of the program, really, I'm looking at eligibility for this type of programming, um, centers on regression, so the loss of performance levels that there were before breaks. Children who are eligible, you know, may learn at a limited rate, um, which lengthens the amount of time that they take to recoup skills. And then the time for children to accomplish such recruitment is greater than a typical time period. So, you know, ESY is recommended through the IEP process and those recommendations really have happened so far this year, just so families can prepare for if their child was recommended for ESY. Um, and things that we always consider through that process is, you know, what is the degree of a student's impairment? Has a student met their IEP goals and objectives? Is there evidence that a student will, uh, who will lose learned skills after a break in services? And then does the student limit, uh, limited learning rate, lengthen the amount of time required to then recruit those skills and make progress with IEP goals and benchmarks? Um, so information will be coming on ESY twenty twenty-five. Um, and again, those individual schedules will be sent to families in April. Um, and then there'll be some dialogue back and forth that changes things. And then again, just some more, um, just description of the program. Um, ESY, you know, is not based on just an overarching disability. Um, it's not mandated for all students with disabilities. Um, and so this just kind of helps tease up the description of the program. So those are my updates for tonight. Great. Twenty questions?
Thank you, Mr. Stapleton. Our, our field chair is, uh, is stepped away for a moment. So I'll, I'll kind of take the reins. Well, Mr. Carr, any questions for him?
This is great, great job.
I see Ms. Davis in the audience. Do you want to have a, I know customarily, we've invited you to come up and give us any CPAC comments or questions?
No questions. That was great. We had an excellent presentation that Michael gave with Caitlin.
Yeah, Caitlin Stromberg, our high school school psychologist.
It was great. And people really, I had people asking me, you know, for the copy of it and I think some adults really liked the executive functioning information they learned, we helped included. So it was a really good presentation and we went CPAC. We were at the health fair, so we met some families when we were there, so that was nice. And we have our next meeting coming up. Actually, you were talking about goals and modifications and accommodations in your slides, and that's what our next presentation is on. We have a local parent, actually Erin DeMallow. She's going to do a presentation. She's a parent teacher and she's also an advocate for South Shore Education Advocacy. And she's going to be doing a presentation for us next Thursday at eleven o'clock at workstation, talking about modifications and the difference between modification and combinations. So that's our next meeting. And then we have one more.
And that topic will be on like preventing regression, not necessarily tied to E S Y, but just like strategies for families over the summer to prevent regression of skills. The summer slide is how we defined it. And I'll have a special education teacher or teachers still working that out. Be with me just to help share resources too and just allow CPAC an opportunity to hear from teachers in different setting and just, you know, parent conferences or I E P meeting. So stay tuned for that.
So that's that.
Great. Well, thank you both. I have no comments or questions and thank you both. With that, I think we will turn it over to our budget, resources, and governance section for our approval of the F Y twenty-six budget. Given we're short one person, we can't vote just yet, but we can go through the facts. I think a lot of stuff has been met in prior meetings, so I don't think Chairman McCollum would be missing anything while he's otherwise disposed.
I think he's seen this.
Yes, obviously seen this in other formats. So this is really a, and actually, this is, this is stuff that's been in our committee packet, correct?
So this is actually, some of this is just updated because we weren't able to update until after Monday night. And so there's some new updated information here.
Share. Let us proceed.
And I'm gonna actually start with a little bit of an overview of F Y twenty-five because I think that's important as it's part of the conversation. And so as everybody knows, we are at, running out of deficit currently. Our current deficit is approximately nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. But one of the things that Ms. Owen and I have been working on and I'm grateful to Ms. Owen for her assistance and work on this is identifying how we can bring that deficit number down by the end of this current school year, so by June thirtieth. And so what you'll see here is a list of ways that we can start to bring the deficit down. It is a conservative list, so we do think we will be able to bring it down potentially even more. But a lot of this is something that happens routinely at the end of the year is that we look to see if there's any additional circuit breaker money. We look to see what costs could be offset by some of our revolving accounts. And we look to see where else we have taken in any additional revenue. And so we think that by the end of June, we will be able to draw down that deficit from nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And hopefully we can even do better than that. We have shared this information with the town manager. He is aware. And he is prepared to be able to support us this current school year by covering the deficit that we will have left. So that is this year's update. Going in and looking at F Y twenty-six, one of the things that we've been talking about is what it would cost if we were to level service with new changes to program and personnel. For F Y twenty-six to do that, it would cost the district a little over twenty-six million dollars. But we know that our F Y twenty-five budget was just under twenty-four million dollars and that the town allocation for F Y twenty-six to the schools is nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars, which means as a district, we will only have twenty-four million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That left us with a gap of just under one point four million dollars that we had to close. That highlighted yellow number will be the budget number that we are asking you to vote on tonight. You can see that this is Ms. Owen's workbook. I'll make it a little bit bigger so people can see. Some people, we went for a two-pronged approach with this because some people like this budget workbook version. And then there's another version that will help people see how we got to a balanced budget for this coming school year. And so we knew that in order to have a balanced budget, there were a few line items where we actually had to increase our allocated monies. We know that utilities is going to continue to go up and we, we all, we have historically for the last couple of years, overspent in utilities. Same with the studio supplies and materials, athletics, transportation, and special education. And we also know that for class size reasons, we are looking to increase a grade for a teacher. That, though, we are looking at reconfiguring some staffing. And so that is cost neutral. So in order to, and that five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars is included in the numbers I just shared with you for this year. And so in order to close that one point three nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three, the one million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollar gap, these are the moves that we are making. We are making a series of reductions. We are significantly reducing supplies, materials, and professional development. We are moving the bus parking. We are moving it away from where it is where it costs us over forty thousand dollars a year. And we are moving it back to the high school. We are in conversation with some entities in town that will hopefully be able to host the buses during the school day. And so we'll keep people posted on that. We have fifty thousand dollars in retirement savings. We are reducing actual positions as Chair McCollum referred to earlier. The Director of Data Evaluation and Curriculum, which is a central office position. Some custodial positions, a bus driver, an educational support professional. We have a retirement at Deer Hill, which we are not replacing, but we are still, I want to be clear. Children at Deer Hill will still be getting their health curriculum. It's being provided by a certified teacher and just in a different way. A lunch and recess aid, an office aid, and a point four math E S P at Deer Hill. We are also reducing the library aid at the middle school, high school. And our middle school French teacher has decided to retire. And I want to just publicly thank Ms. Kathy Sines. She's an amazing teacher. She has touched many lives in her years here. And we wish her well in her retirement. I hear she has some pretty amazing plans. But what that has allowed us to do is we have two teachers at the high school who can teach French. One of those teachers will move to the middle school. Class sizes at the high school with regard to world language will grow a little bit, but there is room for that growth. And so that allows us to save a whole salary. And then thanks to the committee for Monday night because with the addition of some fees, we are able to continue to offset that deficit that we were looking to close. So through reductions, we closed seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of the gap. And then we think we will take in approximately seventy thousand dollars additional in athletic fees, twenty thousand dollars in student parking, an additional forty thousand in transportation, an additional four thousand in building rental, approximately three hundred thousand in kindergarten fees. We are again thankful for the collaboration and the support of the capital planning board who are funding the entire school bus leases through capital, which allows us to bring back sixty thousand dollars in our operating budget. And we are grateful for the support of the town for one hundred and fifty thousand dollar one-time special education allocation cost, which brings us to about twenty-four thousand dollars more than that one point three million, almost one point four million gap. So we are presenting you this evening with a balanced F Y twenty-six budget that we can support and that meets the needs of the district as best it can.
Okay, thank you for that Superintendent Shannon. Any thoughts from the committee on that board?
It's very nice to hear that the city is very cooperative with us. I think it is in our best interest to continue to be very aggressive between now and the end of the year to lower that number for the city. That will be very well received. So I think we need to just continue to think about how we sharpen our pencil around here before the end of the year. So anyway, that's sort of broadly my thoughts, but I think this is a great budget. It's clear. A great deal of thing, thinking has to go on about public education in this town after I'm no longer here, but it will be important because it is a Band-Aid on a problem. I think we need to just continue to figure out how to do this, you know, differently, better.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Dial.
First of all, Superintendent Shannon, Dex Skolins, Owen, tremendous work here. I mean, this has been, I hope that could be incredible intro to the superintendent position, no doubt.
One way to learn.
You have really, really tackled a huge, huge problem and we have a solution. And while, as we know, that solution may not make everybody happy, there's no way you can find one point four million dollars and make everybody happy unless you literally find it, which is not usually how schools are funded. So I first want to thank you for all your work on this. And I also want to thank you for coming up with a solution to an intractable problem that is in the best interest of the district and therefore in the best interest of the community. So thank you for that. I fully support what we've done here, what you put forward. So I will close by saying that, building on Mr. Carr's comment, that despite all this work, the work here we've done is to solve a symptom. It doesn't solve the problem. And I do think we should take the energies, at least some of the energies that we spent trying to solve this gap for this year and think about more permanent solutions, what our funding needs should look like and be prepared to propose to the town. Now, citizens at a town meeting, a more structural solution to our education funding. Otherwise, I fear we'll find ourselves in this situation again sooner than we expect. So thank you for this, but let's not, let's not declare victory yet.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. I feel very grateful for all the work that our central office staff put into this. Actually, not just central office. I mean, there's a collaboration district-wide on how to do this and some folks are are being burdened with more of a sacrifice than others. And it's just, it's, it's just, it's no small thing to to tell someone that that they're not going to be returning to work with us next year. And it's really, it's really discouraging that we were in that position. Superintendent Shannon, I'll just ask you, I mean, these numbers that you're presenting, are you confident that, and obviously you cannot give us an answer to a hundred percent degree of confidence, you don't have to press the ball, but, I mean, you've been immersed in this for months now. I mean, are you confident that we are at least setting ourselves up to, in the best possible way, to ensure that we won't find ourselves in a scenario where we have a ever-increasing shortfall next year? Because this is exactly what we're trying to avoid. These are the, this difficult decision that I just talked about. In addition to difficult decision like reinstating kindergarten tuition, we want to make sure that it's all for good reason. And that it's enough. And if it's not, we have to be candid about that. Do we feel that, do you feel confident that we're going to be in a fiscally stable environment?
I do, pending some really unforeseen circumstance. I, I think I feel confident with where we are. And I think Ms. Owen and I have gone over these numbers many, many times and asked for a lot of input. And so I do feel comfortable with this.
Okay, and as far as, I, I mean, I have to also address the red elephant in the room, which is this, this number that just keep on getting bigger and bigger every month. And I, you and I have spoken about it offline, but I just want to discuss it and highlight it a little bit more in open meeting here. I mean, we feel that we have somewhat of a handle on this shortfall and that, you know, the numbers that you presented them are going to allow us to manage it through the end of the year, the fiscal year.
Yeah, and I would say we also, we spoke to all of the central office and principals today and said, if there is any anticipated costs that you have between now and two thirty, if you need to let us know today. Some of those may be approved, some of them not, because there are like graduate, some graduation costs have to approve. They're taking into account paper needs between now and the end of the school year. All of those things. And so we, our goal is to know by the end of next week exactly what that number will be.
All right, well, as, as I want to thank you and thank you to our building principals, our staff, our C T A, everyone who collaborated on this. It was a very difficult situation and I think that we're at least putting ourselves in a position to effectively address it. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the F Y two thousand twenty-six Cohasset Public Schools budget as presented tonight by our Superintendent of Schools?
So moved.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sentations. Motion carries by a majority vote of three members. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. We have Community Relations Communication Section of the Agenda, which is reserved for reports from subcommittee position, liaison positions. Any reports, anyone?
In the category of the working group that looks at budgetary items, we have going to go through an exercise about the current status of the electric bus and its contract. And we'll report back to you. We're going to have a call with the vendor. You recall the vendor is no longer in Massachusetts. It's been a challenge to manage. So I'm going to work with Sue and others to have a conversation and we'll report back to the board next steps about our test with the electric schools.
What's the, what's the current status and decision point in the house? What's the impact of moving the bus parking?
So we are entitled, they will pay to move the charger. We can move it at an additional cost to us. The contract has been hard to manage from a distance. So when we took on this project, if you recall, there was a third-party company involved. That company at their discretion shut down their Massachusetts and Moon-based operations. For period of time, you've moved it back to where their parent corporation is in the country, Italy. Then they moved it to another location. They have been a challenge to deal with from a perspective of maintenance and care of the bus. The bus is safe, the bus works. We need a partner that also works as part of our scenario for this. So this has been a learning experience for everyone. We're going to have a frank conversation. We'll come and see what to do, what to do next about about the bus. But it has been a challenge to deal with this. The good news is we have not been billed significantly. We have been reimbursed. I promise to be reimbursed for cost out pocket for the most part, is my understanding. So they have been good in that way. I think they I think they also may want to do something differently with us, so they asked to have a conversation with us, and we're going to do that, but I'm going to come in and see soon and just sort of figure out what do we want out of that. But basically, it's a, and I think this is very appropriate to have a check-in call with the vendor periodically, and so we're going to, we're going to do that and sort of come back and give some advice about what to do next. If that is acceptable. To everybody, we will proceed.
Thank you for that. It was a great report, Mr. Carr. Thank you. So continue to update us on that. Mr. Dial, do you have any reports to share?
I have no reports to share.
I guess the only report I'll share is not necessarily a summer banning that happened at a subcommittee meeting, but just a reminder that Superintendent eval perspective, I will be sending out the summative document to the committee members in the coming weeks. Mr. Carr, you'll be included on that as a twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five academic year committee member, so we need to, obviously, one of our priority, primary rules as school committee members is to evaluate the performance of our superintendent. And Superintendent Shannon has asked that we complete that task a bit earlier than we have in the past, which was over the summer. And it's, it's a bear to get everyone to respond to this. So please be attentive. I'll remind everyone, a few, few meetings coming up, so it's just on everyone's radar. I won't be sending it out for a few weeks. With that, I think we'll move right into approval of meeting minutes. However, the only set of meeting minutes that we have to approve is from the public hearing on the budget. And one of the, we have three members to create a quorum tonight, and one of those members that was present tonight was not present at that meeting, cannot vote.
I could, I should, but I won't. I'll understand, but if I understand, you still have a majority of those voting.
We wouldn't have a majority to approve or reject the minute, so what I'm going to ask is for a motion to table that item until the approval of those minutes until the next regular school committee meeting. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Carr, all in favor?
Aye. I have one.
All opposed.
I am committed to making sure before I depart your beautiful company here that we will be completely up to date on minutes before I leave. So I want to continue to thank especially Jennifer and Kathy Bach, who have been wonderful to work with on this. So we're going to review the list, see what's posted, make sure we have everything, even if we may be missing one or two somewhere in arrears, we will find it. And we will make sure before the end of this school year that we are completely up to date. But the good news is that we are in a very, very good position on this.
That is great news, Mr. Secretary, and thank you. It's a thankless role, except when you're explicitly thanked in open meetings. So thank you for everything you've done for keeping that, keeping us on track there, because that was not always the case. So we're, we're very grateful for that. So Superintendent Shannon, we'll just keep that in our materials for next time. And we'll move into executive session. There is a reason to move into executive session. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty, Chapter A, Section Twenty-One, Small A, Number Three, to discuss collective bargaining strategy, litigation strategy, and contracts on union personnel. Is there a motion to move into executive session for that reason stated and not reconvene back open session?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr. Must be a roll call vote for this. Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Mr. Dial?
Aye.
Aye. Craig McClellan, motion carries by a vote of three members. We are moving into executive session. I will end the regular session. We will not be reconvening. Thank you, everyone who participated and or viewed this meeting tonight.